Calling the meeting to order.
Can I have a roll call, please? Belsley.
Here.
Dobbs.
Here.
Herr.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Kaufman.
Here.
Newhouse. You have a quorum.
Let's do the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We have no public hearings today, but we do have a nice presentation from the Morton Economic Development -- I always want to say commission, but it's council, isn't it? Okay, I'll get it right. I'm standing because I've got to get out of the way of the movie screen here. I'll turn it over to you, Jennifer.
Good evening, and thank you so much for allowing us to come and present tonight, Your Honor and trustees. I'm Jennifer Daly with the Morton Economic Development Council, and I'm here to give a progress report to keep everybody informed on our progress with our economic development efforts. And so, we're going to jump right in. And first, I wanted to just make a comment about why is economic development important? And we, you know, get asked that question a lot, actually, you know, why is it important for a community to have economic development efforts? And so, I wanted to share a little bit of information about that. I thought it might be important not only for us, but also for anybody who might be watching this at home on TV. In our village, even though we have far more residents than we have businesses, you can see by this chart that our commercial businesses still pay a very large chunk of the funds that come in to help support our village economy. So, that's very, very important in terms of operating our village and having funds to operate our village and not having to rely as much on the income from our residents. I also wanted to show this slide about our schools. The vast majority of our property taxes, close to 80%, go to support our school district. And yet, you can see that property tax resources, commercial pays about 50% of that bill. So, again, what you can see by these charts is that our businesses pay an awful lot towards the support of our school district and our village, and so, having healthy, growing businesses is really important for our economy. Just a quick reminder, we're in a five-year process called our Make it Morton campaign of 2012 to 2016. And of course, we're in 2014, so we're already heavily into these particular goals. Goal one, 750 new jobs created by our clients, so the businesses that we work with directly. Goal number two, a 10% increase in commercial construction as measured by our village permits. And our goal number three, an increase in our retail sales tax income by 10% as measured by the state of Illinois. So, those were the goals that we set when we started this process in 2012. And I just want to kind of show you where we're at as of the end of 2013. So, you can see our annual goal was 150. If you think about 750 over five years, 150 per year. And this year, our clients created 314.5 new jobs. So, and you can also see reflected on their 2012 and how we did in 2012. So, we're well on our way in on this particular goal of meeting or exceeding the expectation that we set. Second goal was commercial construction, a 10% increase. And you can see the annual goal to meet that five-year goal was 9.46 million. And this year, we just, we had an unprecedented year in commercial construction. And I think actually, you know, Roger went back a ways for me to look to see if in our records or in the records he could find if we had ever been at that level before. And I think we had one year that got kind of close, but this was the highest year in commercial construction that we could find going back. So, you know, we've had some pretty large projects this year that have helped that number to be pretty high. And I, you know, I want to thank your team at the village for working so hard this year on all these many, many projects that we are seeing coming to fruition. And then, our retail sales tax, our annual goal, based on our overall five-year goal of 10% increase, was 3.3 million. And this year, we were at 3.9 million. And we anticipate that that will just continue to grow, especially with the opening of Farm and Fleet this year in October. So, they're predicting quite a large increase in their retail sales tax. And then, also, of course, with Sam Lehman's new facility planned, we should see that continue to increase, which will be terrific. I just want to remark on 2013, on all the business expansions, these were clients that we worked with this year. Blaine's Farm and Fleet, Clear Path, Enterprise Rent-A-Car, Inspired Arts, Johnson's Floral, Magnified Vision, Millenia, Morton Reynolds, Pizza Ranch, and Sam Lehman. We worked with all of these clients this past year on expansions. Sometimes, it seems like the, we get recognized a lot in our local media for new companies coming in, which is always very exciting. And sometimes, we don't spend as much time talking about our own businesses that we work hand-in-hand with on important expansions or retentions or challenges that they face. But it does take up a vast majority of our time, and we're really excited to see these businesses growing right here in Morton. We also did help some new businesses to locate here in town this year. Recently, had a really nice article in the newspapers about Baoli, who is co-locating with Yinlin. Goodness Bake Shop, if you haven't stopped in and had some of their treats, you're going to want to do that, it's fantastic. Monsanto, QC International, Sherwin-Williams, So Chic Boutique, Weber Construction, and The Wine Bar, all companies that we helped make Morton their home. Just a quick note on new property tax generations. Now, I want to say that these numbers are based on just the clients that we work with. So, these are numbers that we collect from them when we're working on a project. And so, the estimated new property tax generations from projects that we worked with, clients we worked with in 2013, is 257,000-plus annually. So, that would be ongoing annual new property tax generation, just based on our clients. But I looked back, compounded total since 2008 is 860,000 annually. It's compounded by the projects we've worked with since 2008. So, you know, that's terrific to see that. And we know, again, if we go back to the discussion earlier, that about 80% of our property tax goes to support our school district. So, you better believe they're pretty thankful to see those projects happening here because it really, really helps their bottom line. And what it means, too, as we all know, is that it keeps our property tax bill low as residents when they see that additional income coming in. I also want to talk about new sales tax generation, of course, very, very important to the village. A great deal of those funds go to support our village budget. And again, this number is based on the projections of our clients only. So, only our clients. And their projections for 2013, 280,000 in new property tax, based on those projects. And going back again, just on our clients from 2008 till today, the compounded total is a little over 1 million for those projects. I also want to remark on you, you might have seen some of the projects happening around town, our facade grants. And I know, just announced a new round of those, so that's, you're going to see even more wonderful things happening with those. But this is a program of the Village of Morton, of the Business District Commission, a group that works very, very hard. I want to recognize trustee Kaufman, who serves on that commission, and also Wendy Farrell here tonight, who works very, very hard to support that group. And they do a terrific job with our facade grant projects. And these are four facade grant projects that you would have seen happen last year. $16,175 in the small grants that are given out, leveraged over $58,000 in actual improvements to property. So, I think that's a pretty good payback for the community of Morton in terms of beautification and these buildings. Also, another program that we do, and this is done through the Morton Economic Development Council and funded completely privately through a directed investment by Morton Community Bank, is our Morton Micro Grant. And these are small grants of $1 to $5,000. They're based on expansion or new companies coming into Morton, and they're based on job creation. And so, you can see here the businesses that received grants, Inspired Arts, Johnson's Floral, Morton Reynolds, So Chic Boutique, and The Wine Bar, all for either location or expansion projects to improve their business. And again, all connected to new job creation. We also, in 2013, returned to China to continue our partnerships, and that was a very successful trip. You see here is a picture of Illinois Central College developing a sister city relationship, signing an agreement with Tian Tai High School. And so, now, they are officially sister schools. And we just continue building that relationship and seeing new growth happen here with our own company Yinlin, again, with the Baoli announcement, and now, recently, Puritex joining them as well. Another component of our Economic Development Council is a greener Morton. And just a quick note, we have 440 businesses in Morton with paid employees. And of those, very few recycle. As of right now, about 47 of those companies actually participate in commercial recycling. So, one of the things that we're focused on is encouraging our businesses to get involved with a commercial recycling program, either through Grims here in town or another provider. And so, we've been educating our businesses about those opportunities and encouraging them to sign up. These are new recyclers in 2013, and we've set another goal for next year. And so, we're excited to see more and more businesses interested in that. And of course, you know, I think we've had many, many discussions here at Freedom Hall and with all of you about the Morton Downtown Plaza. Very exciting that we recently kicked off the campaign to raise funds. Our goal to raise $1 million this year, by the end of this year, to match with the village's Business District Commission funds, so we can move forward with construction. And I'm happy to report today that we have raised a little over $70,000 so far, just in a very short period of time. We have many, many meetings still to go. And would love to remind everybody watching tonight that if they're interested in learning more about this project, they can go to mortaneedc.org, and all the details are there. Or I'm sure they can talk to any trustee here, or contact our offices, and we'd be happy to talk to them more about the plaza project. The Morton Community Foundation, our partner, has a fund set up, and we are full steam ahead in trying to meet that goal by the end of this year. Before I conclude, I just want to take a moment and recognize our board of directors with the Economic Development Council, most specifically trustee Herr and trustee Newhouse, for all of the work that they do on our board. We have many serious discussions, and it takes a lot of time to be involved in our organization and do what we need to do. And we really appreciate the support they give. I also want to take a moment and recognize, I think every single trustee is involved in some way in our organization. Jeff Kaufman serves on the Business District Commission, as mentioned. I want to mention that trustee Herman has been very involved in our downtown development committee. We really appreciate that assistance. And trustee Dobbs is a new member of our retail recruitment committee, which we really appreciate. And then, I've been seeing a lot lately of trustee Belsley, who is an active member of our business recruitment committee. And we've been having many serious meetings lately about projects and matrices. So, we really appreciate your help with that committee and all that we do. And of course, once again, I want to recognize the amazing staff members that the village has. Craig Lautermilke, Roger Spangler, Wendy. We just couldn't do it without this team at the village. They work extremely hard on behalf of our taxpayers and are often involved in some very difficult discussions about business development. And they are always so supportive of trying to help figure out how we can have a win-win situation for the community. And so, we can really be proud, I think, as citizens to have a team like this working here for us. And with that, I would love to take any questions anybody might have. Mayor, any questions? Anything?
No, when you're as thorough as you are.
Well, once again, I just, I want to thank all of you. And we so appreciate at the Economic Development Council, not only the support you provide us, but your participation, your active participation in the things that we do. It's exciting, and it can be very challenging. And we know that the best interests of our community is really protected with all of your support and interest and involvement. So, I want to thank you two for your time this evening.
Is there any comment from anyone else in the audience? Would anyone in the audience like to pull anything from the consent agenda? We have the minutes and approval of some bills. Would any of the trustees like to pull anything from the consent agenda? I have nothing. How about the village clerk?
Oh, we need to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Coleman?
Belsley.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
The only thing I have tonight, Your Honor, is two more waiver requests regarding the raffle ordinance that we passed a few weeks back. Tonight's request are from the Grundy School PTO and the Letty Brown PTO. This will complete all of the grade schools asking for waivers on this particular situation.
And the waiver is for?
So they do not have to post a fidelity bond.
Okay. So moved.
Second.
Second by Randy. Any discussion? Call it.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
The eyes have it. Village Administrator.
First item on my list is I would like to ask for approval to transfer $500 from the general fund and $24,000 from the water and the wastewater depreciation fund to the capital projects fund.
So moved.
Second.
Second, Senator. Any discussion? Luke?
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Next item.
The second item on my list, I would like to request approval to extend the lease with Thomas Creek. His current lease is up in June, on June 30th of 2015. He would like the option of continuing on a month-to-month basis after. And we, either of us can terminate the lease with 30 days' notice. He just wants the option to have, you know, to be able to stay in the building if he chooses. He's a great tenant. He's been there quite a long time. I would recommend this.
So moved.
Second.
Sam, second. Any discussion on this? Call it.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Chief of Police.
Couple things. First, in conjunction with the Relay for Life, which has been going on here several years, they would like to have a walk-run take place during that on May the 31st. There should be some information in your packet regarding that. Couple things I want to note is that it talks about auxiliary officers being at location. That's not the case. They could have volunteers, but it will be an open course, much the way the crop walk is, where they would utilize sidewalks and ride along the curb. So, we've spoken with them, had contact with Susan for tourism, and we're supportive of this. And I would ask that the board approve that.
Can I have a motion? So moved. What's nice?
It was a tie.
Why don't you put down ties?
It's salmon.
Kaufman.
I have a question. This is a little bit different because it's in the evening.
Yes.
How long do you think it will take people to complete that course? I mean, will it be while it's still light out, or will there be any issues with that?
Yeah, you're talking the lights. It's going to be, it's about three weeks away from the longest day of the year, which is typically 9:00, 9:30 at night. There should be no problem with them being done within an hour and a half.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Call it.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Corporate Counsel.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
It's St. Patrick's Day, you do know that. Okay, just checking.
She told you it was not finished, I don't think.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you only had one item.
I just had one other thing, and this is just information. I just made contact today with the DEA, and we've been approved for the next drug take back, which is going to be on the 26th of April. It's a Saturday, and it'd be between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m., where people can drop off unwanted or expired prescription medication. We will be posting that on the village website, as well as some of the other sites.
Terrific.
Still nothing.
Still, I thought you had thought something up in the meantime. Fire and Emergency Services Director is not here. Trustee Dobbs, did you have anything you wanted to mention about the fire department or emergency services?
No, not at this minute.
Okay. Director of Public Works.
I have one item tonight, Your Honor. I have in your packets ordinance number 13-32. This is an ordinance amending Title VIII, Chapter 2, Section 10 of the Morton Municipal Code, seeing reference to the customer gas piping. Basically, this is a clarification of the ordinance. It basically reads, it'll be rewritten to read, "Customer piping must be a black iron Basically, the basis of this is to clarify so that we're not getting, we get some plumbers trying to put some different systems in that really don't meet our standards. So, this will give us a little more teeth or backbone to control what goes in these homes for the safety of the residents.
So moved.
Second. Second by Sam.
Any discussion on this? Vote.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes.
Do you have anything else, Craig?
That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Planning and zoning.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Belsley.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Dobbs.
Just to mention that Sunday, March 30th, begins a semi-annual hydrant flushing. It should take approximately three weeks. And for any additional information, of course, this is a weather permitting, check Cable Channel 22.
And some, people should know, sometimes, there's a little coloration in the water, but that's not a problem, it's just from stirring the water all up. So, don't worry about that.
Right, and the pressure drops a little when you're flushing, too.
Trustee Herr.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Trustee Herman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I asked our clerk to put a report in your packets. This report was provided by Lon Barkdal, who is a vice president of the Gas and Utility Alliance. And I just thought it was just an interesting report. We knew that the Village of Morton is the largest municipality member of the Gas and Utility Alliance, but we're also the second-largest member. They're up 465 meters from the previous year, so they continue to grow their assets, total 25, 12.5, I'm sorry, 12.5 million, which is an increase of 1.1 million over last year. So, I just wanted to report that the alliance that we're part of is in very good shape financially. And I think we can be very thankful that one of our own is a member of the leadership there and in making the policy decisions. So, just, I thought that was a really good report, and I appreciate Lon sharing it with us. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Any questions of trustee Herman? Trustee Kaufman.
A couple items tonight, Your Honor. First, announcement of the Spring Yard Landscape Waste Disposal Program, which would be Saturday, April 12th, through Sunday, April 27th. April 12th through April 27th, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Again, it'd be the same location at the sewer treatment plant, number two, on South Fourth Street, there at the corner of Broadway and Fourth. And the same rules apply, and we'd appreciate if the citizens would obey those rules for the size of the timber and no plastic bags. And those, that'll all be posted on the TV. But it'd be the April 12th through April 27th. Then, this other item I have, Your Honor, is the contract with R&amp;R Services to provide services for our yard waste program for the spring and fall. The contract amount is $40,157.72 per year. You've been provided totals there for the last few years. We asked for a two-year contract for the same amount. I have, the records clear back to '03 here with me, and this program started back in 1997, about $22,000 a year, and it grew to almost $80,000 a year. So, between 2003 and '08, it averaged between $55,000 and $73,000. And since '09, we have worked with R&amp;R Services, and it's gone from anywhere from $35,000 to this $40,157 number. So, I would like to make a motion that we approve a two-year contract for the total amount of $80,314.44, waiving formal bidding for the entire two-year duration of the contract.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tom Dobbs, second. Any discussion?
Are the hours of operation extended?
No. No. So, do you mean for the hourly?
Yeah, well, no, I just see the hours. I thought, in the past, we've had it close at 5:00. It's closing at 6:00?
Closing at 6:00.
Okay.
These numbers that you've provided are the total cost, and then, we have some reimbursement from the loan, or the grant from Tassell County Health Department, or whatever, that would cover like 22.
Correct.
Yearly. So, all of this is, yeah.
But it got to the point that it was almost costing $60,000 a year more.
Yes.
So, Bob and myself, back in '09, we got another firm, and things have changed, and they've been very, very good firms to work with. And they've, in '10 and '11, they had the same price. We had a small increase in '12 and '13. Now, in '14 and '15, it's the same price. So, they've been great to work with.
Thank you for that.
Any other questions or discussion? Call it.
Belsley.
Yes.
Dobbs.
Yes.
Herr.
Yes.
Herman.
Yes.
Kaufman.
Yes. Just one other item, Your Honor. Just a thank you to the citizens. I've got some totals here from our, from our recycling. We've had the one-year contract now with Grims on the recycling. We signed a seven-year contract with three years of extensions. And there's 5,320 households in Morton, and right now, 5,090 of them are participating in the curbside recycling. And that's a 95.6% rate, which is considered fabulous. You have to realize, some of those homes are unoccupied and people moving and different things. But the real interesting thing is, everybody thought the recycling might go down with the big the big bins and that. In 2012, we collected 1,092 tons of recyclables. In the first year of the new contract, we've recycled 1,207. So, recycling's going up with the big bins, and it sure is nice not seeing all the plastic bags floating around town. So, a big thank you to the citizens for keeping the lids closed. That was, part of our hope was, so I just appreciate everybody's efforts to make it work. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Any questions of trustee Kaufman? Trustee Newhouse couldn't be with us tonight. We have no closed session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn to the Finance Committee, which is the committee of the hall to discuss the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Belsley. Vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?[1764.15]